Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would call in to open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for January the 16th, beginning at 7:06 PM. I want to thank everybody for coming out and being with us this evening. We will start our meeting with our open ceremony. Please join Dr. Reich for our pledge of allegiance.
(audience) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Good job.
Good job.
Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions around you. And now, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. This evening, we have some students here to perform for us from Ditto Elementary School, the third grade singers. Ms. Foster, please.
Absolutely. President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, everyone lucky enough to be here tonight, and everyone watching on our broadcast, this is going to be so much fun. So, these are the third graders from Ditto Elementary. They're the Rangers, and they are going to teach us about the power of a hat tonight. Their instructor, wearing a hat as well, is Jennifer Mount. Wave to everybody, Jennifer. Yes, congratulations.[157.56][157.56](applause) So Jennifer has actually been in our district for 17 years, so she's really good at this job, was even recognized as Teacher of the Year for the 2013-2014 school year here in Arlington. She is the music teacher for all of the kids, but has the choir group of fifth and sixth graders as well. So her day is filled with the sounds of music. So Ditto Elementary's motto is "Where the West Begins," and we began the year with this great performance of the musical called Hats. And it was written by John Jacobson and John Higgins. It celebrates the findings that each hat fits each individual person. So tonight's performance will be of the song "The Perfect Hat For Me," that highlights all the possible hats one could choose in their life. So take it away, our Ditto Rangers.[218.12][218.12](applause)
There are many kinds of hats, in every shape and size, and underneath each one is a very special prize.
Us!
With all the hats to choose from, it's so hard to decide. Just follow my advice and find a hat to wear with pride. (singing) There are so many hats, it's hard to choose. It has to fit my head and not to match my favorite shoes. I know my head is bare, but that's I guarantee. I'm gonna take my time and find the perfect one for me.
The perfect hat for me, whatever will I be? I'll always have my think of a bomb with a perfect hat for me. The perfect hat for me, I'll find it, wait and see. I'll always have my think of a bomb with a perfect hat for me.
If someone hollers "Fine," I know which hat to wear. And if I need to change a tie, my head will not be bare.
No matter what the jaw, as you can clearly see. I'll always have my think of a bomb with a perfect hat for me.
If I rest a crook, I'll have a cap for that. And if I make some bread, I'll wear a white baker's hat.
No matter what the jaw, as you can clearly see. I'll always have my think of a bomb with a perfect hat for me. A helmet, a derby, a cowboy hat is cool. A square one with a tassel when you graduate from school. A motor, a beanie, a stocking cabaret. Or maybe we should have a different hat for every day. The perfect hat for me, whatever will I be? I'll always have my think of a bomb with a perfect hat for me. The perfect hat for me, I'll find it, wait and see. I'll always have my think of a bomb with a perfect hat for me. I'll find the perfect hat for me.[415.81][415.81](applause)
That was fun and makes me want to go shopping.[496.72][496.72](laughter) Okay, next on our agenda is our Student of the Month. Please, may we have the principal of Lamar High School, Principal Andy Hagman, come to the mic.
President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, good evening. It is a true honor to be here tonight, and seeing these little guys up front was actually really fortuitous because I'm looking at them and I'm thinking, you know what, I have the perfect role model for you. Her name is Sophia Mendoza. She is a senior at Lamar High School, and she is extraordinary in every sense of the word. When we talk about providing more than a remarkable education in this district, she's a testament to that. She is our Richard Green Scholar. She performs in our symphony orchestra. She is a volleyball player. She is president of the orchestra. She is in the class council, National Honor Society. She works. She's just, she does it all. And what's amazing and wonderful is that she's one of those people that she just inspires you, by virtue of her presence, to be better. Me, to be better. I look at her and I think, wow, she's amazing, and it makes me want to be a better principal to have kids like her. And so it is a true honor for Sophia to represent Lamar High School as our high school student of the month.[603.29][603.29](applause)
Thank you so much for being here, board members, and just allowing me for this opportunity. And thank you, Mr. Hagman, for being my role model as I went throughout high school. I came into Lamar as a freshman, and right away, Mr. Hagman's voice came on the announcements, and he was that light in my, in the whole school that just brought everyone, like happiness and, I don't know, there's so many words you could say about Mr. Hagman, but in addition to Mr. Hagman, I've had so many role models throughout my life, including my family foremost. They have been my number one supporters throughout my entire life. Anytime I wanted to do, like, work two jobs, they were like, "Do you, are you sure you want to do that?" But like, once they saw that I could handle it, they said, "You know what, go for it. Like, if you think you can handle it, if you think you can do all of these things, do it, because I'm not going to stop you." They are so endlessly supportive. And I know I get on their nerves sometimes, but with my, just schedule as long as the freaking Constitution, you know? So, but they're still so supportive, and I just love them so much, and I love the opportunity that I've been given by AISD, and just that I'm allowed to do so many things and that the, the opportunities are endless here. I, the first three years of high school, I wanted to be in the medical field, but then I went to the CDC and I saw that that wasn't for me, and then they inspired me to chase my actual goal in business. So, yeah, I just love that I've been given these opportunities, and thank you guys so much for continuing to support me throughout my four years of high school.
Congratulations, Sophia. And if you will remain down here, we'd like to come down, Dr. Cavassos and I, and make a presentation to you. So Sophia, I am presenting you this, and on behalf of the AISD School Board of Trustees, for you to wear, for you to remind you of the reason why you had an opportunity to come, because of what you are doing to help represent AISD, and it's been a very huge job, and we appreciate it. So this is for you.
And Sophia, this is for you to commemorate today, and thank you for being an outstanding student. You're an exceptional role model for our students, and I know that you will continue to make an impact in your life. So, thank you so much.
That's so much fun. Next on our agenda is our presentation for the Martin Luther King Celebration Art and Essay winner. Please.
Well, thank you, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. This is the 31st year that we are celebrating Arlington's Dr. Martin Luther King Four-Day Celebration. So there's going to be a lot going on. We want everyone to participate this coming weekend, up through Monday. Lots of events all across Arlington. There is a website that people can go to, at the city's website, to learn more about the Martin Luther King Four-Day Celebration. It does start tomorrow on Friday, and that's going to be with the Advancing the Dream Awards Banquet. At the banquet, five of our Arlington ISD students are going to be recognized as winners of the MLK Art Contest. That's going to be really fun, essay contest, art and essays, both. And here to tell us a little bit more about the weekend and to introduce our winners are MLK Celebration Committee co-chairs Lisa Thompson and Dr. Robert Bing from the University of Texas at Arlington.[914.82][914.82](applause)
Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, and all members of the board. We are very excited to be here, as we are every year, to present the award recipients for this year's celebration. I just want to say that every year, it gets better and better, and it's such an exciting time for us in the city of Arlington to come together, the city, UT Arlington, AISD, TCC, the mayor's, excuse me, the Arlington Ministerial Association, and just come together and present and prepare opportunities for our community to see each other, work together in community. You heard all about all the activities that we have planned, scheduled events, and we do have a flyer that we'd like to present to each one of you, just in case you
Absolutely.
don't have one already. But amidst all of that, we have wonderful students who are living, learning, dreaming Dr. King's message. This year's message is diversity in action. And I would like to present this time, starting with our essay winners. Our third place essay winner is Sharon Arthur from Sam Houston High School.[997.32][997.32](applause) Our second place essay winner is Victor Huerta from Sam Houston High School.[1014.13][1014.13](applause) And our first place winner from Arlington High School, Blessing Roland Maga-G.[1032.73][1032.73](applause) You will have an opportunity, if you come to all these, all of our events over the weekend, to see these individuals, because we like to showcase their talents at all of our events, including the Community Service Day, the festival, the banquet, as well as our Youth Extravaganza on Monday evening. So, congratulations. We're very proud of you, and thank you so much for helping us to have such a wonderful event, because of the words that you have written that will help inspire other people. So thank you very much.[1071.63][1071.63](applause) Yes. Do you want me to go ahead and do the art first? Okay, all right. And so now I'd like to present our art winners. In the second place, we have Talia White from Owlesley Junior High School, Junior High School.[1097.23][1097.23](applause) A junior high student. And our first place winner, all of our materials will have, including our T-shirts, will have this individual's artwork. And you'll see, everyone that comes to our Youth Extravaganza, that's part of our youth groups that are singing, will be wearing one of these in unity, and those angelic voices is going to be wonderful. Mar Peel, our first place winner, from Martin High School.[1134.58][1134.58](applause) Again, we're very proud of you, and thank you so much for making our weekends possible by having artwork that we can showcase. And we know that you all are very talented. We'd like to thank their teachers or parents for allowing them to be a part of this celebration in such a really special way. I'd also like to thank all of our committee members who are here. If you all could just stand, because it takes a year's worth of planning to put this celebration together. So, thank you all very much.[1172.48][1172.48](applause) And we look forward to seeing each and every one of you at the events this weekend, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations again to our art and our essay winners. And while they're taking pictures, I'll just take the opportunity to once again say, if you need information of the events that will be going on over this MLK weekend, you can go to arlingtonmlk.com. You can also visit the AISD website. And while they're taking pictures, I saw, I saw Ms. Thompson on the news. You did a wonderful job talking about the city of Arlington and the MLK. Good job.
Ready? One, two, three. There you go.
Blessing, it's good to see you again, our past student of the month. Mar Peel's family is here. City Council member, Andrew Peel, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is our School Board Recognition Presentation. Ms. Foster, take it away again.
Thank you, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Guess what month it is?
January.
Oh, that was so good![1284.23][1284.23](laughing) Arlington ISD graduate. It is School Board Recognition Month, and no one deserves it more than the seven people that I see before me, led by our superintendent, Dr. Marcelo Cavassos. I don't think a lot of people fully understand, and I'm totally off-script, just so y'all know, just going to go rogue a little bit, what it takes. The commitment of time, the commitment of talent, the commitment of brainpower that it takes to make sure that a district of this size operates and does so every single day with the highest degree of love and efficiency, because that recipe is the one for success. You guys make that happen. It's not lost on any of us here in the district. So on behalf of every single one of us that represent the Arlington ISD, we thank you for taking the time to run, to commit, and to serve the students here in Arlington, Texas. So thank you for that. Now I'll read what I'm supposed to read.[1351.01][1351.01](applause) So there are actually 1,025 school districts in Texas that celebrate this particular month for school board members who serve as the link between the community and the classroom. This year's theme is "Launching the Next Generation." And to help show our appreciation, we've got a special guest from Fitzgerald Elementary. It's the art teacher, Garrett Randall, and he's bringing a handful of his most talented artists with him tonight. Come on in.[1384.23][1384.23](applause)
Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, board members. So again, I'm Garrett Randall, art teacher at Fitzgerald Elementary. I'm here with a group of my artists. We are very honored to have this opportunity to say thank you to you guys this evening. As art educators, we see every single child that comes to our door as an artist, whether they realize it or not, we see that. It's our opportunity, we have the great opportunity to help them realize that by giving them opportunities with different media, different styles. We can't do that without you guys. We're really lucky in Arlington to have a board that sees the value and importance in what we do. These guys were given homework during Thanksgiving, because I'm that teacher, but it was easy homework. All they had to do was contemplate this launching the next generation. We came back with some pretty interesting ideas. At that point, they were challenged to pick their media of choice. And in a very short three weeks, again, we came up with some pretty, pretty awesome, awesome ideas. So I would like to begin inviting the students up. We're going to start over here on the left with Mr. Chapa. Jack here, originally, he had quite a few ideas. I had to remind him a few times that we needed to be two-dimensional, but he did a cut-paper collage with a hand-colored photo self-portrait to say he's ready to take on the world. And just stand right here.[1516.83][1516.83](applause) All right, next, Mr. Chris. Mr. Chris, for Mrs. Fowler, Chris chose watercolors. He had a very interesting concept in that he's showing kind of the evolution of media, from print media to electronic media, but also the, the journey of a child as they grow, and their mentors, teachers, parents, whatever, helping them along the way.[1554.58][1554.58](applause) Mr. Michael. For you, Dr. Cavassos, we have the character, Mr. Michael.[1571.73][1571.73](laughter) He's quite a character. Michael initially chose to stick with just graphite on pen, on paper, so pencil and paper. Over later, he chose to add a pop of color. He came up with his own quote. Do you want to read the quote?
Future generations learn from the old to bring new light.
And so he came up with his own quote for his, his artwork? Go ahead.[1604.63][1604.63](applause) All right. Next, President Mays would, would be Derek, but unfortunately Derek couldn't be here this evening, so his classmate, Betsy, is going to bring his work up. Derek, again, chose to work with watercolors, and he went with the theme of science fiction, with, I think the logo had a rocket ship, and so it's the rocket flying through the solar system. You're okay, Betsy.[1642.11][1642.11](applause) And we'll just put his right there, just put his right there, and then we'll go back, and then we'll bring your comment in a second. All right. Okay, Mr. Bowie, Mr. Howard, we have Jasmine, who was very like-minded, two great artistic minds, she and Derek, thinking alike, also working in watercolors with a little bit of a science fiction theme as well.[1671.01][1671.01](applause) Ms. Walton, we have Ace King next. We know that you were once a librarian, I believe, at Spears, as a matter of fact, where I got started. Ace used a combination of marker, color sticks, pencil. He kind of created the evolution of the classroom. So you have a little bit of the textbook and a little bit of the modern educational apps All right, Mr. Will Banks, we have Dariana, who also worked with a combination of color sticks, markers. Color sticks are basically like colored pencils, or just big chunky, fun things to use. Working with the technology, evolution of technology, the technology that helps them to learn. We were told you were a big technology guy, so.[1747.11][1747.11](laughter)[1748.11][1748.11](applause) And then finally, Dr. Reich, back to, back to Betsy, who, again, worked, she worked with the color sticks and colored pencils, again, with a science fiction theme, but with her rocket launching towards her future, hopefully her future endeavors, careers, interests, So, again, like I said, thank you, everybody. You know, we cannot do this without you guys, like I said. So with that, do we want to?
You guys want to come down? Yes, I was going to say, can we come down if y'all stay there?
Okay, next on our agenda is public hearing. We have a public hearing for the Texas Academic Performance Report, otherwise known as TAPER. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays, and this time I'd like to introduce Dr. Barlow to make a presentation, and Cindy Powell will also accompany him at some part of the presentation as well. So, Dr. Barlow.
Thank you, President Mays, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. So, yes, we're here not to discuss the TAPER report. This is an annual event. A lot of these data, we've already reviewed, I think earlier, maybe in August, and so I'll hit some highlights. Some of the review data, I'll just reconfirm that and kind of review that a little bit, and then we'll go ahead and get started. So, a couple of things here is that the TAPER report, it's the Texas Academic Performance Report. It describes the educational performance of a district in each campus in the district. It's intended and informed the public about the educational performance of districts, campuses, states, and how the different schools compare to each other. So, some of the measures that are included are listed on the slide there. The district performance, district progress, prior-year students and student success initiative, district participation, district attendance, graduation dropout rates, college career, military readiness, student information, and staff information. Certainly, the report itself, if we include all the campuses, the district and so forth, is over 1,000 pages long, so we're gonna get all those 1,000 pages here in about three minutes. And so, you know, we're just gonna hit some of the highlights there. We do have some of these data in our PowerPoint, and so we'll kind of highlight some of those. So, going back to our district rating, we reviewed this, I believe, back in August. We have a district score of 86. As you know, those scores broken down in four domains, domain one, and then you have domain two, which has two parts, and domain three. You can see the scores listed there. Academic achievement is 79, academic growth is 79, relative performance an 88, and closing the gaps an 80. We also get distinctions. The district is only eligible for one distinction. We didn't get that, but we will go through the distinctions that the campuses receive. We always feel like that's a really nice highlight, that's a little bit higher level of performance, and so we list those campuses, and you'll see those in just a few slides. So, when we want to, we like to take our data and compare that to districts that are like us, and when we talk about districts that are like us, kind of the way we define that is we look at other districts that are plus or minus 10% economically disadvantaged students with respect to us. So, let's say that we were at 70%, then we would include other districts that are like between 60 and 80%. That usually comes out to be about 400, 420 districts, something like that. We feel like that's a much fairer comparison than, say, comparing our scores to, say, Holland Park, where they have no economically disadvantaged students. So, when we do that, we kind of have a side-by-side here on our data, and I believe the headers there should say 2019, so those are 2019 scores. It's just the header needs to be corrected. But domain one, we had a 79, which fell in the 29th percentile, domain two A in the 71st percentile, two B 48th percentile, and then the domain three, the 69th percentile, and overall, the 63rd percentile. So, just a quick reminder on percentiles, what we're saying at the district level, the overall rating, when we say the 63rd percentile, that means that we outperformed, we performed as well or better than 63% of those districts in that same group. And so, our target there, as we've talked just with senior staff, and we discussed what would be a nice target there, I think a really nice target, or at least the first milestone there, would be to get that to that 75th percentile, to get into that top quarter of that group. I think that'd be performing quite high with respect to similar districts. Just to give you an idea of the jump there, that I thought we'd captured in the slide, I think we missed it, but I wanted to give you just a quick summary of the jump there. On domain three, you see that where it says the 69th percentile? Last year, we were actually at the 42nd percentile. And so, we jumped from the 42nd percentile in domain three all the way up to the 69. So, there's a huge gains there, a lot of that had to do with going back to the CCMR component that really added to that domain three and really moved that domain three score. When we look at the overall score, where you see the 63rd percentile, last year we were at the 42nd percentile. So, again, we jumped from the 42nd to the 63rd. That's a huge leap with respect to kind of a relative performance type of thing, which adds a little bit of context. Sometimes a number is just a number. It's kind of hard to tell if that, how that number, the meaning of that number, until we kind of compare it to other districts like us. So, just a quick comparison, I won't read through all the numbers here. When we look at, just a comparison to last year, again, this is, these are raw numbers, these aren't percentiles, but I won't go through the campus levels, but at the district level, in domain one, we had a gain of six, in domain two A, we lost a point there, but still hanging in there about, at the 79, at a points, our scale score of 79. Domain two B, you can see that gain of nine, and domain three, a gain of seven, and then overall, a gain of eight. So, we had quite substantial gains there in two B, domain three, and then the overall score there. So, when we just look at the rating, campus rating summary, we have, with our high schools, we had nine of our nine high schools that met standard. With our junior highs, we had 10 out of 10 that met our standard. With elementary campuses, we had 51 out of the 54. You may also remember that we had Berry that was, had fallen just a little bit below the mark, we filed an appeal for that. We gained that one back, so we're very excited about that. And then you also see there that Wimbush is listed, just because that was actually what happened last year, but we've also done that additional work there. And so, that's a little bit different setting with respect to them not really kind of falling into that category of not met standard. The other two there would be short and spirit at the elementary level that were improvement required. So, just kind of scanning through some of the subject-level data, and this is at the approaches grade level. If you'll remember, we have three levels of standards with respect to each test. We have approaches, meets, and masters. Without going into all of the different data components, we kind of focused on the approaches. That's what they consider passing right now, so we kind of talk about that in general terms. But the idea there would be, when we're looking at all subjects, we had one-to-two-point gains in most every area. I think I see also a 4% gain there in American Indian. You may also notice or note that those smaller populations, like American Indian, Pacific Islander, those fluctuate quite a bit, so you may see some slides that have a plus 10 or minus 10. Those populations are very small, just a few numbers there can move them quite drastically. But overall, as we go through the slides, we have maybe a one, two, three-point gain in several areas. Every once in a while, we'll see a little bit of a drop. So, what I like to concentrate on is that bottom row, where you see the difference between 2018 and 2019. Moving on to the next slide, reading, same setup. You'll see there, again, one-to-two, three-point gains across the board, maybe a couple of losses there. Go to mathematics. We have, in the all students category, our student group, we have 1% gain, again, holding steady with some single-digit gains pretty much across the board there. Trying to see if I see any minuses. I don't see any minuses on that one. Writing, again, you'll see, holding steady, a little bit more gains there. We had a 2% for overall. Again, holding steady there with single-digit gains across the board. I see, looks like we lost a couple of points in two or more races in special ed, but you'll also notice there that example of Pacific Islander, where you see a huge percent gain. That's, again, that's because those populations are so small. You have a few students pass or not pass, it'll move that percentage quite a bit. And then, science, again, you'll see, holding steady there with a point or two gain in many of the areas. And then, social studies, this one's always interesting, because we perform very well in social studies, and we continue to see gains there. So, when I was kind of glancing at this, I see the all students category, our student group, 4% gain, that's a little bit higher than some of the other areas, but we already perform very well in there compared to other content areas, but we still continue to get gains there. So, I think that's kind of exciting. It's just kind of an anomaly, a little interesting there. So, distinctions, we have several categories there. I'll kind of read through those real quickly, but basically, we had 33 campuses that received at least one distinction designation. You get those in all the content areas except for writing, so you have ELA, math, science, social studies. You also have the top 25% gain in academic growth and closing the gaps, and then at post-secondary readiness. And that post-secondary readiness is the one that's eligible at the district level, that's across the state. We just didn't attain that at the district level. So, I'll do this like I did last year, or the last couple of years, where I won't read through all the names, but I really think it's significant to at least show the campuses that fell into each one of these distinctions. So, I'll give a couple of highlights, and then move on to the next slide. So, English Language Arts, we had 17 campuses. You'll see the high schools, the junior highs, and elementary campuses, three of the high schools, several junior highs, and then several of the elementary campuses. I'll leave that up just for a couple of seconds. We move on to mathematics. We had 14 campuses, again, three high schools, several junior highs, several, or a few of the elementary campuses. I'll leave that up just for a few seconds. Moving on to science, 16 campuses, four high schools this time, four junior highs, and then several of the elementary campuses. You'll see those listed there. And then, social studies, eight campuses here. You'll note that elementary is not eligible for social studies, because it don't have a test at that grade level, but you'll see four at the high school level, and then four at the junior high level. And then, academic growth. So, this is not necessarily just a content area specifically, or for one year, you have to look at growth from one year to the next, and then you also compare yourselves to other districts that are similar, or other campuses that are similar to you. So, this is a little bit higher achievement level, because you're trying to compete against other campuses. So, for academic growth, you have 15 campuses. We have Seguin there at the high school level, almost all of the junior highs are a good portion of them, and then some of the elementary campuses there. Closing the gaps, this is where you are looking specifically at student groups, and you're trying to get each one of the student groups up to a very similar level, so that we have similar performance amongst all of our student groups. So, you'll see the 13 campuses, one a distinction there, three at the high school level, four, five at the junior high level, and then four, five at the elementary level. And then, the post-secondary readiness, 16 campuses. Even though this sounds like it's a high school-related thing, there are some measures that they do at the different levels at elementary as well, that they consider post-secondary readiness. So, you'll see the campuses listed. You have 16 of them, one of the high schools, several of the junior highs, and then several of the elementary campuses. Moving on to a couple more data slides, and then I think my slides are just about, I've just about completed those. The bilingual, we look at some of the programs. Bilingual is one of those. Again, this is looking at that approaches grade level, comparing 2018 to 2019 in the content areas. Here, you'll see five, I believe that's 5% gain for all students, 6% reading, looks like 3% math, 13% writing, and then a little bit of a loss there in science. I probably would concentrate on that writing one. Writing is a huge part of, or one of the areas that we've wanted to concentrate on just overall throughout the district. And then, when we look at our bilingual scores, to have that much of a gain there, I think that's significant. Then, ESL, kind of that other component of the ELL programs, same type of setup there. You'll see the gains across the board there on that last row, 6%, 5%, 6%, 10%, 4%, and 10% in the different areas. You have all students, reading, math, writing, science, and social studies. I'm gonna spend just a minute on this slide. We haven't really talked about this slide, but I think it's significant, and I just want to make sure that we're all aware of that. So, with the new ESSA requirements, they require that you have high test participation rate. So, the standard there is 95%. We exceed that standard, which is a good thing. The state's at about 99%. We're at about 99%. So, we're doing a very good job there as far as meeting that standard. But maybe just a caveat that goes into that, is that if you fall below that standard, so let's say that we were 94% participation, then what TEA would do is they would arbitrarily assign what we would call a false failure for that 1% that falls below that. In other words, if you don't, if you had 94% tests, you're gonna have 1% that's automatically considered a false failure, and that goes into your calculations. So, I just make that statement, because we're well above that. I have no worries about that right now, but it's kind of this weird caveat there with respect to the way the system works, and it probably has caught some districts off-guard or some campuses. So, it is just kind of play into that. That's why we listed on the slide there. 95% is the standard. We're 4% above that. I think we're in great shape there. It's just one of those little weird caveats. Moving on to attendance rates, so you'll see those across the board. We have a little bit of a loss across the board. You'll see like a half percent or 1% across the board. Don't really have explanation or any research on that. It's just comparing the numbers, so maybe something that we want to look at as a district. The four-year graduation rate, as you know, we've had some focus on the four-year graduation rate over the last couple of years, and so we've had some gains in that, that if you look at just the all students there, 1.1% gain from last year to this year, I think that's significant. If you'll think back through, a four-year graduation rate, that doesn't happen in one year. That's a four-year process, and so it's really hard to move the needle on that in one year, because you're talking about seniors that have gone through the system for four years, and so you've got to have a long-range plan for that. So, to have a 1.1% gain in one year, I think that's outstanding. And then, you'll see the other differences across the board there. Several of them have similar gains, 2%, 3%, and so forth. A little bit of a loss there, and again, Asian, I'm sorry, American Indian, and, well, I lost the other one. But again, those are small populations. Those, the percentages move there quite drastically with just a few students. The opposite of that is the dropout rate there. So, obviously, we would think that if our graduation rate's going up, our dropout rate's going down, which that's a good thing, and you'll see that trend there. Overall, you'll see the 0.9% reduction or decrease in the dropout rate for all students. The five-year graduation rate works very similarly. It's just we capture students the fifth year. We try to get them to graduate the fifth year, because even if they don't make the four-year mark, we certainly want them to graduate, and so there's that focus on getting students to stay in school, graduate the fifth year. We see similar trends across the board there, 1.4% for all students. Again, a nice gain there from one year to the next. And then, again, the five-year dropout rate, we see the opposite of that, which is a good thing. We want to see that decrease, and so you'll see about a 1.1% decrease there for all students there. And then, I think Ms. Powell has the next few slides.
Thank you, President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos. The next portion of the TAPER report is around student and staff information, demographic information, and numbers. And so, what is presented in each district's data is its own counts, and then the state level counts. And so, this data comes from the fall 2018 snapshots, the last Friday night in October of 2018, is the date from which this data was extracted. So, at that point, we had 59,783 students in membership. You see the distribution there. We are quite a diverse district. In terms of the categories at the bottom, economically disadvantaged, we are higher than the state average or the state percentage. 72.8% of our students are economically disadvantaged that year, compared to 60% for the state. 28.1% of our students are English language learners that year, compared to 19.5%. And then, our at-risk percentage, 64.4% of our students are considered at-risk, compared to the statewide percentage of 50%. I always point out that the state issues the criteria that define a student as at-risk. There are 13 indicators. One of those indicators is a language deficiency or English language learners. And so, you can see that if our ELLs are higher than the statewide percentage, it makes sense also that our at-risk count is going to be higher than the state percentage, that those two things track together. This slide simply shows a graphical breakdown of our... This slide simply shows a graphical breakdown of our student population by ethnicity. Our largest ethnic category of students is Hispanic at over forty-six percent, followed by African-American at twenty-four, almost twenty-five percent, and then white at nineteen percent, and then you see several others that are smaller percentages. Terms of staff, this information also comes from that last Friday in October of twenty-eighteen, and again, you see our numbers compared to the state. I've highlighted and read a couple of points that people like to key on and ask us about always. So we had, in October of twenty-eighteen, eight thousand two hundred and ten employees, and forty-nine point nine percent, right at fifty percent of those are teachers, that's right at the same percentage as the state as a whole. Other areas are comparable, when you look at central administration, we are at about half of the statewide percentage of, of employees. Students per teacher, we have fourteen point six students per teacher, that's just straight enrollment divided by total teachers, there's no adjustment there for different specialty programs. So that's a tick less than statewide average, and then the average years' experience of our teachers is ten point one, so similar, but just a tick less than the state, and then average years of experience of a teacher with our district is seven point seven years, which is higher than the statewide average tenure of teachers with their current districts. Our instructional staff percentage is right at the statewide percentage, and this is a calculation, it's actually based on time, but it's for the people who have direct classroom responsibilities, teachers, TAs, actually counselors are included in this mix, and even substitutes, and they take the time for these people, divided by the overall time for all employees to make that calculation. The expenditure information, all the financial information that's in the report is actually linked, so when you, if, if you go online to the Tapper report, the very last page, there's a link out to the expenditure report. And the expenditure report has district data for both just the general fund and then all funds. For the state data, it just has all funds, all right? And that's important because all funds will mean different things to different districts. Some districts may have a bond program going on, others may not, some districts may have particular grants that others do not. So it's, when you talk about all funds, you really are mixing apples and oranges, but that's the information that is available through that link for the statewide data. So that's what we have always presented in this particular report. For, with all funds included, our expenditures per student from the twenty-seventeen eighteen fiscal year, that's the data that's included in this particular Tapper report, are eleven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, and that's higher than the statewide average. That is because of the impact of our bond program on our total expenditures, and I'll point that out in just a minute, but again, in red, things to point out in terms of instruction, again, all funds, so taking grant funds into consideration, along with the general fund and capital projects funds, we spend five thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars per student compared to the state average of five thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Looking on down the way, we're pretty similar in all the, the categories down to general administration, we are half the state average. The next line is where you really see the impact of, of our bond program, you can see that plant maintenance and operations expenditures per student are much higher than the state average. And I've, I put a slide in here that calls out just the general fund for both the state and the local district in just a minute, and you can see the difference here. In terms of security, we spend more per student than the statewide average, and then the other two areas are, are very comparable. This is the very same data presented in terms of percent of our total budget rather than dollars, so again, looking at the top, our total expenditures per student are eleven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars compared to the state average, nine thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars per student, and looking at these different functional categories by percent, by percentages, you can see very similar story than what the dollars just told. Fifty-one percent of our budget would be our expenditures were for classroom instruction compared to statewide percentage of fifty-five point eight percent, again, all funds, and our bond expenditures skew that a bit. You look all the way down, you'll see that the next item in red, general administration, we, our percent budget spent on general administration is half the state average, and then you look at plant maintenance and operations, again, that percentage is much, much higher than state, again, those are those bond dollars skewing that information. At a different place out on TEA's website, you can get a report that has the statewide expenditures in, just in the general fund. So when you pull that information, compare it to our general fund expenditures, now you have apples to apples, everyone's general operating expenses. And so with this particular presentation, you see that our total expenses per student are less than statewide average, and when you look at instruction, the classroom instructional expenditures, we spend five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars per student compared to the state average of four thousand nine hundred and seventy. Again, all the different functional categories are comparable. When you get to general administration, you see that our expense per student is half the state average, and then looking at plant maintenance and operations just for the general operating fund, these are going to be your utilities and maintenance costs, and even, and, and repairs, we spend less than the state average by about two hundred dollars. So this is a much more apples-to-apples comparison, this is what we use whenever we're comparing ourselves to peer districts, to see if we're in line in terms of functional expenditures, it's always just the general fund. Also in the Tapper report, they have information on fund balance and instructional expenditure ratio for all funds, again, all funds is the key there, so our bond dollars skew that percentage a bit, fifty-eight point four percent for us compared to the state total of sixty-two point seven, and then on the general fund, unassigned fund balance, thirty-eight percent, our, our fund balance represents thirty-eight percent of expenditures compared to the statewide average of twenty-seven point seven percent. And so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, Ms. Mays, Ms. Powell, thank you for explaining the, exactly what my question was, with the all funds and the plant maintenance operations, but I do have a question related to that, if you look at the security number, that one is also skewed quite higher than what the state average is, but I assume that's also because of the bond.
It is, but again, if you look at this slide that is just the general fund, you can see that that, in that security function, we spend a hundred and thirty dollars per student compared to a statewide average of ninety. So even just looking at general operating expenditures, not considering dollars that we've spent on, on video cameras and security systems out of the bond fund, we are spending more money per student on security than districts across the state on average.
And that's a recent phenomenon?
Within the last few years, I'd have to go back and look to see historically, but we have for a while been higher than the state average on security.
Okay. That's good. No more questions?
No more. Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Powell, thank you, and I think we all use the Tapper report a lot when people start asking questions, and we need to look up data and, and some of those things. Would you sit there, you know, Tapper takes the whole state into account in the state average? When you look at some of these extra things that you have cost on, some of that is very much a urban school district. Would you say if we compared our AISD Tapper to the other, let's say, the top twenty districts within the state, would we be pretty similar across the board?
We are, we-
Taking out the, the bond piece, that kind of, it matters what timing you get for that, but-
Right, when you look just at general fund expenditures, we tend to, to compare very, very favorably, we tend to spend less per student than twelve other districts we like to compare ourselves to, and our instructional percentages are usually towards the middle and the upper half of those twelve districts. Our general administration expenses are typically down at the bottom, and then our plant services are usually kind of in the middle, so we usually compare very favorably. I, I, you take it back to very simply, total expenditures per student, we spend less, we've had less revenue per students over the years, or per student, and so therefore we have less to spend per student. And so for years, we have, have demonstrated that we are spending less per student in most categories than most of the districts we compare ourselves to.
I think some of the question comes in, you know, look at, you know, securities a little higher, sometimes plant maintenance and operations, you know, you're able to spread that out across multiple campuses, sometimes that can decrease your overall expenditure, if you've got a few buildings, it can look pretty expensive on the average where they come through, you look at extracurricular and districts that are having to travel a ton, having added a lot of added cost to do those type of things. So I think it, you know, we are lucky that our food service fund is an enterpr- not enterprise, whatever we changed it to, a self-sustaining fund to process through that, so, all right, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Powell, thank you, Dr. Barlow. We have no comments from the audience, but we do have one from a trustee. Dr. Raj.
Thank you, President Mays. Thank you. Dr. Barlow, before you go, I, I did have a question.
Wasn't actually, I just changed seats.
Sure. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you both for the information, as Mr. Hogg said, the Tapper is a, a great source of information for us to share with the community and do comparisons, et cetera. I was just curious, when you mentioned the seventy-fifth percentile as, as a goal, is that kind of the, the cutoff for an A rating as a district? Is there any correlation to that, or what?
No, there's not, it's not really a correlation of the A rating, I mean, that, that's a whole, very kind of sophisticated algorithm that the state uses for that, so it's not necessarily correlated to an A rating. I think when I made that comment, a, a really good goal in anything that we're doing, I think, is if you're, if you're in the top quarter, that's a really good thing. Now, can you be number one? Well, that would be great too, but not everybody can be number one. But for me, at least being in the top quarter would be a, would be a big thing, and we've talked about that a little bit, just with senior staff, we kind of, I think we said that maybe as a first milestone there. But specifically, when we look at just the gains that we had, we went, I don't have my notes in front of me now, but we went from like the forty-second to the sixty-third, which is huge, and so if we make similar gains to that, we could be in that top quarter, and to be in the top quarter, in my mind, just my opinion, but to be in the top quarter of four hundred districts that look like us, I think that would be a, a big thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Along those lines, are, obviously, there's ebbs and flows, ups and downs in, in each district, including ours, as a general trend, would you say those districts like us are on the uptick, are improving in most areas?
There was one, there was one area, I think it was Domain Two, I actually had in my notes that we all seem to go up together, so even though we had like a gain, I think it was two, maybe two B, I can't remember now, but as we had a gain, we actually lost a little bit in the percentile ranking, because, not much, but a little bit, because other districts are going up as well.
Yeah.
With respect to that overall score though, if other districts were going up the same, we wouldn't have made that, that jump, because they would have moved up with us, so if everybody went up the same rate, we'd have stayed at that forty-second percentile.
Right, right.
So we know we outgained them there, in, in Domain Three specifically, and in the overall score.
That's great, wonderful. That's all I had, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Mr. Will Banks.
I'm sorry I lied earlier, I, it's, but maybe I didn't, because I don't really have a question per se, other than I want to point out to my colleagues and the detailed data that we got, there's some real gems in there, and I want to point out and kudos to our staff, because if you look at the participation in AB and IB, we're outperforming the state on that, and if you look at our SAT scores and ACT scores, that's also a bright spot in our district in terms of what we're doing, and showing that those that are looking to go on for advanced academics, I think we're doing a great job there, so kudos to the staff for that.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay.
I don't know where to go right now.
Okay, so you can have a seat if you'd like, thank you very much, Dr. Barlow. So we have no comments from the audience, I just want to confirm that, Ms. Benjamin, before I move on. So the public hearing on Texas Academic Performance Report is now closed. Next on the agenda is our open forum for agenda items. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. I have one card from our audience. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak, a lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. So we have a card tonight from Christina Blank with UEA concerning school board appreciation. Did we give a time limit? I don't think we did. Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Okay. Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Kavassos, thank you for letting me speak tonight, ooh, went awesome. Okay, I won't need all five minutes, I promise. Okay, it just says two though, two seconds, it's like the bomb's gonna go off, okay, I'm sorry. During this month, we'd like to recognize our school board and all the work that you guys do. To be a member, a member of a school board is, it takes a very special person, it takes a person with passion for our students and for education, because you don't get paid, and there's lots of work to do, and you take time out for your families and your jobs to come and help us in the district, and you help our children here to get a quality education, and you're responsible for all the employees here in the AISD. And I just wanted to take this time to thank you for giving us your talents, your knowledge, and your passion. I appreciate everything you do, thank you so much for your time.
Next on the agenda are our action items. Action item this evening is consider order of election for the school board. I need a motion to call a trustee election on May the second, twenty-twenty. Do we have a motion? Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays, at this time I would move to call the school board election in May.
Second, Ms. Walton? Okay. So we've got a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Ms. Walton, I will read the order of election. A general election is hereby ordered to be held Saturday, May the second, twenty-twenty, for the purpose of electing members to the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District to fill place numbers six and seven. The main early voting polling site for all voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District, including the portion of the district that lies within the city of Arlington, the city of Dow Worthington Gardens, the Tarrant County portion of the city of Grand Prairie, and the town of Pantigo, will be the following location. Tarrant County Election Center, twenty-seven hundred Premier Street, Fort Worth, Texas, seven six- Tarrant County Election Center, 2700 Premier Street, Fort Worth, Texas, 76111. Between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, beginning April 20th, 2020, through April 25th, 2020. Between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, April 25th, 2020. Between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, April 26th, 2020. And between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on Monday and Tuesday, April 27th and April 28th, 2020. Applications for a ballot by mail for voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District shall be mailed to early voting clerk, P.O. Box 961011, Fort Worth, Texas, 76161-0011. Or an email transmission of a completed scanned application for a ballot by mail containing an original signature can be emailed to votebymail@terrentcounty.com. Effective December 1st, 2017, if an application for ballot by mail is submitted by fax or email, the original application must also be mailed and received by the early voting clerk no later than the fourth business day after receipt or the faxed or emailed copy. Applications for a ballot by mail must be received no later than the close of business on Monday, April 20th, 2020. The order of election may be amended at a later date to include early voting sites added or deleted due to joint elections with other political subdivisions issued this 16th day of January 2020. Once again, had a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Ms. Walton. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing none, please vote. All present vote in the affirmative. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is a discussion action item, Consider Board of Trustees Handbook. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. Over the past several months, the Governance Committee has reviewed the board handbook. It's something that we do every year. This version of the handbook has some, we continue to tinker to make it more readable, condense some sections, align it with policy to make sure it doesn't deviate from policy. And the Governance Committee is now bringing it. We've had a couple of agendas that this has been on for discussion, and this time we bring it for a vote.
Okay, are there any questions? Comments from any trustees? Mr. Hogg.
Yeah, thank you, President Mays. The only comment, the printed copy we got, I think it's just because it's printed out from a PDF, so it looks a little stretched, so we did want to make sure. It looks pretty when it's completed. I don't know how else to say it other than that. Format-wise, it would just ask. I think all the content's fine, just ask that we could do get that format and completed.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Any other questions, discussions, comments? Okay. Mr. Chapa?
If there are no comments or questions from my colleagues, at this time, I'd move that the board adopt the board handbook.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Chapa. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Hogg. Seeing no other discussions, please vote. All in favor, motion passes. We have our trustees handbook. A thank you to the Board Governance Committee chaired by Mr. Chapa, also serving on that committee is Dr. Raich and Ms. Walton. Thank y'all very much for taking care of that business. Okay, next on the agenda are items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Does any trustee have any items to be withdrawn? Okay, then we will move on to our consent items.
President Mays. Yes, President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos, there are three bids on the consent agenda for your consideration this evening. In all three cases, the administration recommends the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district. We also have donations on the agenda for your consideration this evening totaling $81,043. That brings the year-to-date total to $435,859.
Thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Dr. Raich.
I just move to approve consent.
Okay, we've got a motion by Dr. Raich, a second by Mr. Will Banks. Are there any other questions or discussions? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you very much. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Next on our agenda is a discussion item, TRS Active Care Update. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we'd like to have a discussion regarding TRS Active Care. And we've had, as the board is familiar, we've had this as part of our legislative agenda. The board has been very active on this topic and had many opportunities to interact, to discuss with different members of our community, our staff, our delegation, et cetera. And so this evening, we have a unique opportunity to hear from TRS regarding their progress on some of the, really, the points that were made by the board related to this topic in terms of improvements that could be made and our partnership with that. So our district has partnered with TRS to review some of those things, to be very active members of that think partner. And so tonight, I think it's a unique opportunity, again, for the board to hear directly from TRS, get districts' perspective, and really in a partnership sort of way, and really to see how the future is unfolding for this very important topic of healthcare for our employees. And so at this time, I'm going to ask Cindy Powell to start us off and to give us a context of where we've been with some of our feedback and legislative work. And then we'll turn to Scott Cale, our Assistant Super-HR, and then finally from TRS. So go ahead, Cindy.
Thank you. President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos, you know, during legislative session, we come to you almost every meeting and have a legislative update. And so this is, as Dr. Cavassos said, something that has been a priority for us in our legislative agenda, actually dating back to 2015. We've had something about affordable healthcare in our legislative agendas. We've become significantly more active around this particular priority over the last two years. And over the last two years, we've had opportunity to testify before two different legislative committees. In both cases, Mr. Hogg and Mr. Cale have testified. In the second instance, we also had a teacher who testified before the House Public Ed Committee as part of this discussion. So as far as the '86 legislative session, the session that took place last spring, there were two companion bills filed by Representative Kraus and Senator Hancock, both who represent our district and worked with us on this topic, this priority. And those bills ultimately were not passed, did not come out of committee. But out of that effort, though, was born a very healthy, a very productive, I would call it, collaboration with TRS. We have with us again, as Dr. Cavassos has mentioned, the Chief Healthcare Officer from TRS this evening, and she will give us an update on the work that they've been doing around this concern that we've had and a number of other districts have had for quite some time. Terms of the next legislative session, just to kind of frame this and where our work is headed, the next session starts in January of '21 and runs through the end of May of 2021. In our interim legislative agenda that the board approved in December, under the category of qualified workforce, one of the priorities stated there is, again, it's increasing access to affordable healthcare for public school employees and ensuring that TRS develops regional consumer-based healthcare plans through which affordable plan options are offered to active care members by the start of this upcoming plan here. And so we will be visiting with our legislators in the next few weeks even about all of our legislative agenda, including this particular priority. We also work through various organizations that we're members of on our entire legislative agenda, including this topic. And you see them listed here, the School Alliance, the Association of School Boards, and Association of School Administrators, and our area chamber. So with that, I'm going to turn this now over to Scott Cale, and he's going to give you some details on some of the work that he's been involved in directly with TRS.
Good evening, President Mays, board members, and Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for having us this evening. This is a very important topic, as you know. We've been working on it for some time. I think we all grasp the criticality of the importance of healthcare as a benefit to our employees and the opportunities that exist in terms of making quality, affordable care something that is clearly accessible to our employees and our staff. We have been working for the last several years on the topic, and I am very pleased to say it's very much turned into a partnership, particularly over the last 12 to 18 months. In just a moment, I'll introduce the Chief Medical Officer from TRS, and I'm sure she'll give you some more information about where we've come from and where we're going. But for my take on this topic, in the last 12 months in particular, it's really summarized like this. I think we've come to a place where we all recognize collectively, whether it be the state agency or whether it be the districts or our staff, that there's an opportunity that we needed to work on collaboratively. And I'm pleased to say that it's very much moved in that direction. It's a work in progress, but it is in progress. It's not done. There's lots of opportunity. There's no clear definable outcomes at this point, but I am confident that we're certainly moving in that direction. And to the extent that we're working collectively and collaboratively, we're making progress and we're in a place we've not been in the recent past. To that end, that collaboration has included, and I know Ms. Daniels will speak to this as well, has included everything from our district participating in meetings with TRS to TRS's outreach to a variety of districts throughout the state and regional meetings to get those inputs and make sure that voices are heard in a way that they may not have been as recently, but they certainly are at this point. And then collaboratively and collectively pulling that information together to identify opportunities like managed care plans, to identify ways to make the systems that we operate within to receive healthcare more efficient. So instead of figuring out where more money comes from, whether it be a district or whether it be the state, or whether it be the efficiencies of the agency itself, it's about working specifically with the end care providers, at least as one alternative, of which there's others, to look at how we spend our dollars rather than just looking for more dollars. And certainly while maintaining the quality of care at the same time. So I'm pleased that we are moving in the right direction. I think that you'll hear in a moment that, again, while we don't have definable outcomes at this point today, that there's a timeline that says this is now real, and there's potential for something truly different to come at this coming up in open enrollment this summer. So with that, and we'll certainly entertain questions now if you choose or when Ms. Daniels is finished, but I would like to introduce the Chief Healthcare Officer for TRS, Ms. Katrina Daniels.
Well, good evening, President Mays, trustees, Dr. Cavassos. I want to thank you for having me here tonight, and thank Ms. Powell and Mr. Cale for inviting me to talk to you about something that's very important to me. I know it's important to you as well. I also want to thank you for your service in this month that is recognized as School Board Recognition Month and acknowledge what a treat it was to see the awards for the kids and their performance. You know, at TRS, we work with educators directly, retirees, school districts, folks who work for school districts. We don't see the kids very often. And so it was a nice reminder of why you do what you do and why we do what we do for you and the folks who serve the children of the state. So I'll, let's see, does this, yes. Okay, so what I'd like to do first is just give some basic background on healthcare, talk a little bit about the context in which we're having the conversation that we're having, and then quickly move into some of the solutions, some of the things that we're working on, that we've been collaborating on with Scott. So first, I'd like to just talk about the big issue that everyone is dealing with. You look at it in a paper every day, you hear it on the news, particularly on the business channels, where healthcare is just expensive. And the cost of healthcare is really a result of two functions, the cost per unit and the number of units consumed. And what we really see in the Dallas-Fort Worth-Arlington area is an area of the state where we know healthcare costs are really high. It's one of the, it's the third highest healthcare cost in the country. And so between the utilization of healthcare, the number of units consumed going up, and the inflation of the cost, together, we've seen in healthcare across the country, this is national data, healthcare costs increased nearly 20% since 2013. And it's been similar in Texas. So when we look in, across Texas, we pulled a data set from Milliman, the actuarial firm, and we looked at administrative services only, so where the, you know, these are employer, large-scale employer-based plans where they're not purchasing insurance, the employer themselves is bearing the risk. Since 2013 in Texas, we've seen a nearly 21% increase. In TRS, and I know, we have an affordability issue, I know that the costs are going up. We deal with this at TRS. We talk to districts about this and the employees directly. But even so, TRS has been able to sort of flatten that cost curve a little bit. But 8%, nearly 9% since 2013 is still a lot of money on an educator's salary. And I know beyond the educators, you have other folks who are earning even less. So we recognize the problem. I also just kind of, to set the context, I want to talk a little bit about where the source of revenue comes because I know you're board members, you look at your budgets. Most people understand this, and I know you do, but the source of revenue that we get for TRS Active Care is different than what we get for CARE. The source of revenue that we get for Active Care comes from the districts. You even get the state portion that comes to us. So the $75 per employee per month that I hear is in the school funding formula. I understand. I don't see that directly. You all do. I understand it doesn't have a line item, but I hear it's in there. So that comes to you, and then you pair that with whatever money that the district's going to contribute, and you payroll deduct from your employees, and that comes to TRS in the form of a check. So we've recently started collecting more data on that. We have a little more sense of what the district is contributing versus what the employees are paying. And so district contributions across the state are on average a little more than 55% of the premium, while employees are paying a little less than 45%. But I want to also show you some comparative data. So the high deductible plan in Active Care for the employee-only coverage, the employer contribution is on average a little less than $300 per member per month or per employee per month. That's fairly consistent with what Arlington does, too. For non-participating schools across the state, they're contributing about $407 per employee per month. That's for similar coverage for a high deductible plan. And then to, we went to a national source of data to look for comparable data outside the state of Texas. You know, I think it's interesting information. Texas is different, you know, our, but I just think it's an interesting point that healthcare, it kind of just points out just how costly healthcare is altogether. And then here's what you would see, oops, sorry, I advanced that too fast. Here's what you would see with the total gross premium. So the gold amount is what the employees are contributing to their cost of healthcare. So I will say, this is kind of the same point as I was making on those cost trend, the cost of healthcare trend charts. There is value in Active Care. We are able to leverage our size and get better. We are able to leverage our size and get better deals. It doesn't mean that healthcare isn't expensive. So it's still very costly when you're having to bear these costs every month, or whether it's you, the school district, in your budget. I saw all the things, all the competing interests that, that you're looking at funding. So, so what can we do about that? You know, how, how do we, if we, if we can't grow the pie, you know, if we can't increase the revenue, how can we spend the money better? How can we drive toward better value, putting the money toward the best care, the highest quality care, cutting out some of the lower quality, quality care, and making every dollar that we have go further? So one of the things that we're doing is, right now, we are in the middle of the largest procurement in TRS's history. That includes our Investment Management Division, that includes the Pension Benefit Administration. We're re-procuring all of our health, all, all of our health plan administration contracts at once. That's active care, that's the, what we call the TRS Care Standard Plan, our commercial plan for retirees under 65, and then our Medicare Advantage Plan. We put that all out to bid at once, because we wanted to see, what would the market bring us if we said, you have the potential to win it all? So one of the things that is a benefit of TRS is you get statewide coverage, national networks, when your kids are off at college, or when you travel, you still will have coverage, because we have a national plan. Sometimes with an HMO or something that's regional, you might get a little bit better deal, you'll have a closed network, and you won't have benefits when you travel. So that's one of the things that we try to do at TRS, but we also leverage our size. So at the February TRS Board of Trustees meeting, the TRS Board of Trustees will be awarding contracts under these procurements. And so because we're doing this all at once, this is a time where we can say to the carriers, bring us your best deal. And so we will take what we get from, from that, those awards, and we'll incorporate that in to our future plan designs that I'm going to talk about in a minute. So that's one significant thing that we're doing. The other is, we heard you guys, Dr. Gavassos came to Austin and talked to us, Mr. Hogg came, Ms. Powell, Mr. Cale, we met with legislators, and you weren't the only school district. You were one of a few that came and said, look, either we need to think about getting out of active care, or we need to reconfigure active care, what can we do? So, so we hear that. We, I, I will say, Scott and I have talked about this a lot. We, we think about how, how active care can serve the direct members. We need to think more about, and we are thinking more about, how we can serve you as the employer. We know that you are working in a marketplace where you're trying to attract the best talent that you can, and so we're looking at how we configure active care in a way that better serves the employers, so that you can use that to attract employees. So we have been engaging districts more than we ever have in the past. In fact, we, you hosted one of our meetings, and we really appreciate that. We've met up in the Dallas area, we've met in the Houston area, in the Austin area, we've been up here a couple of times, Dallas ISD hosted the second time, and we're trying to better understand how we can make our plans more appealing to the employer. And out of that is coming a discussion around how we might make some regional offerings. So I said, TR, TRS serves a statewide population, but I'll say something that's really obvious, and you all know, most of our population is in the Dallas-Fort Worth area and the Houston area. So if we can do something to, and, and there aren't shortages of healthcare in those areas, right? So there, we can do some things that might create more competition in just those regions, and not disadvantage of the rural areas. So we still serve the rural, rural areas well, but we do something in these areas that's maybe a little different. So we started, so Scott and I started talking much more frequently, and, and we said, well, look, and this was a lot of Scott's initiative, I will say, why don't we go and we'll directly talk to hospital systems in the area? And let's say, look, we're not your typical employer, this is the face of your employer, and they're in your community, they're educating the children of your workforce, and they've probably educated people who are in your workforce. Let's do something special for the teachers. And so we've met with local hospital systems, we've met with local physician groups, we're looking to find a way to design a program, and, and I think you guys have heard this, where when you have a high deductible plan, one of the challenges that people have is you have that, that step to get to the place where you've paid out your deductible, and your insurance plan starts paying for your healthcare is steep for a lot of people. Most people can get their healthcare needs met through primary care. So we're looking at redesigning a plan that probably will still have a sizable deductible. I don't know that we have enough revenue to bring that down much. The premium, we're looking to set at a, a more affordable place, but we're going to make access to primary care available. We're looking at maybe three visits per year at no cost. So the challenge will be, it won't qualify as a tax, you know, you, you won't be able to pair it with a tax qualifying HSA anymore, but most people don't use their HSA. Some people may want to protect their assets, they may want that high deductible plan that qualifies, that's a different decision, but most people with families, you know, are just looking for primary care visits. So, so that's kind of the design that we're looking at. We've met with local hospital systems, we're kind of talking about the way we can do this. We've got some local primary care doctors who are committed to helping steer toward those higher-value providers. I will tell you, one disappointment that I've had, I don't know if Scott would agree with me, but, you know, I, we've, we've heard back from not all of the local hospital system providers, but most of the ones that we talked to, and they honestly did not bring us offers that were that impressive. So we're not done with conversations, we think we have a compelling argument, but there's a reason that you read about why healthcare costs are so high. It's, it's not easy, and anytime we lower costs in our system, somebody's losing revenue, and nobody likes to lose revenue. But we're, we're not daunted, we're, we're going to keep having these conversations. So I kind of have already told you a little bit about some of it, so I got carried away and kind of went beyond what we're, what I want to tell you about what we've heard. So employees look at premiums, you know that, their family coverage is also very expensive, I know that, that you hear that as well, we've heard that, I've heard that from legislators. We are looking at how we can adjust relativities across the tiers of coverage. There are some things that we can do, and you guys, I think, have been particularly forward-thinking, you know, if we can do something where we can restrict network and get better discounts, we might get some noise back from the members, there might be some dissatisfied plan enrollees, but if we keep some broad network options open, make a, a more narrow network, higher quality, not ever compromising on quality, including quality metric data in our decision-making, but if we rein in some of the network, we may be able to lower the cost, depending on some of the negotiations we have. But, but we would hope that we could partner in the way that we have, where when employees maybe are dissatisfied because they can't get surgery from the doctor that their neighbor told them about, that we have the collective support to say, yes, but we made this decision based on cost and quality. And then I think you all administer an HSA, a lot of members don't even contribute to those, and so that goes into some of the decision-making that I was talking about. So our new plan designs would be offered in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, in the Houston area. We want to minimize disruption, so that's why we continue to make other plans available, but trying to get a premium that is more affordable on those new plan offerings is a priority for us. And then making, like, some of those primary care costs, or covering some of the primary care visits at first dollar in those plans. Kind of already told you about what we're trying to do in the, in the new plans, a little bit about what else we have to, ahead. So we're getting the message out as much as we can through the associations, talking to folks like you, working directly with the administrators in the districts who do this work on a day-to-day basis. We've been, we have, we have a big district, a statewide district summit that we're planning for February 5th, it's going to be in Austin, we're also going to webcast it, we know everybody can't travel to Austin. So that will be available, I haven't even had a chance to talk to Scott about that, but I hope you guys will participate. But we're, you know, TASBO, TASSA, you know, we're visiting with all of those folks. So February, the board will make the decision on the contract award. April will be active care rates and plan design, so between the board, carrier award, we'll figure out what those discounts, what discounts we can incorporate into the active care rates and premiums, or rates and benefits, and then we'll be talking to probably primarily the staff that works on health benefits across the different districts, and we'll be gearing up for the new plan year. So that's where we are. I just want one, sort of note of caution, or note of managing expectations. The reason I had those slides in the beginning is to show you that it's not just us, it is the cost of healthcare. We can't just make a plan design that will make all the problems go away, but I think we can make some progress. I just, we're hopeful, we, we're going to keep working hard on it. I just don't want you to think that we can fix everything with a plan design or a better contract. So with that, I'm happy to ask any questions. Again, I really appreciate you having TRS here tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Daniels. Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, President Mays. Ms. Daniels, thank you for coming up. Listen, this, we know it's not a common occurrence, and we know you had to take it out of your time to get here, and, and it, we really appreciate it. We like to think our board and our district's taken a lead initiative on this.
Absolutely, yes.
Because we see the problems that's faced, and, and I thank you for partnering with Mr. Cale, our superintendent, Ms. Powell, and our entire team to do this. It, it takes a lot, and we really appreciate having an open mind and listening to your employer, the employers who are seeing this, and we see this from our staff every day. You're in a tough role, because TRS active care has to serve as a ASO plan of where you're going through, but you really can't, it's hard to go back and ask for more funding, whereas a lot of employers would sit there and say, costs have risen, so we're going to increase our cost on that side. And it's a major problem. So I really appreciate seeing how you acknowledge the affordability issue. People get lost in the healthcare system. I, I see it, I think our colleagues, you know, I work in this industry, work for the largest HR outsourcing and consulting firm, so I understand what happens and understand this better, but even at times, I always ask, when I'm with folks, raise your hand if you get confused in the healthcare system.
Right.
And half of them raise their hand, and it's people that work in the business.
Right.
You've probably had EOBs come back, and you're like, what are they billing me on this EOB from that side? And so, you know, people get lost, and if we were looking at things from just from a fiscal standpoint, we would encourage employees not to enroll, because fiscally, it saves us money. But this is not just a fiscal decision, where we have to make these type of decisions, because each employee doesn't enroll, we save 225, or whatever our number is, 300 something right now each time, but we know that healthcare is such a critical factor to our employees, because if someone's worried about how they're going to pay their bill, they're not an effective teacher. They're not doing their best work as a security guard, they're not working in our cafeterias and making food every day for these students, they're not doing those type of things, and we hear those stories. Our security guards are bugged, because I ask them every time. I walk up to them and say, this is a personal question, you don't have to answer, and this is probably some violation of some rule. And I ask them if they have our insurance. And so many of them are like, yeah, just employee only, or, and I'm like, do you have kids? And they say, yeah. I go, your kids on our plan? They go, no, we can't afford it, because it'd take 70% of our salary from where it comes through. So I really appreciate, and, and it's kind of scared me when you said, the employees making a decision on their doctor because their neighbor told them about that. Well, that's part of the problem with healthcare. Just because your neighbor said that doctor's good, doesn't mean that doctor's good. I think one of the most common places people go to find doctors right now is Yelp. That's a terrible way to judge quality.
That's right.
You work in this business, you, you set up plans, you understand that, so I just had to highlight that, going, that is a terrible way for someone to find a doctor, because finding true quality, just because someone rates high on Yelp, doesn't mean their MRI costs are two times higher than the place down the road when they're doing a better job on that. So I think finding ways to help our teachers and staff, because that drives premiums totally down, and that's the hard part you face as a challenge, is you have 400,000 members across this great state of Texas to find ways. So I really appreciate the regionalized process of this. Some of the things I would just say, and I think you mentioned it from this, and I want to be super positive and everything, you know, you talked about the 40-building issue. Salaries haven't kept up with affordability issue. I tell people, the TRS active care plan's actually a pretty good plan if you look at employee only. It's not a bad plan. When you start comparing it to large Fortune 500 companies in the area, it's really a pretty good plan. But when then you then get into employees that have families on the plan, our police department, and our fire department, and our city kicked all employees off if you had coverage for your spouse. They didn't do a spouse loss charge, they said, you're going to leave the plan, you have to prove you don't have coverage. So guess what? We have a lot of teachers that are married to firefighters and police officers, so guess what? We had more people come back to our plan.
Yeah.
Because the city said, we can't afford all these spouses that are on the plan, so we had teachers come back into our plan, because they weren't on our plan, because of the cost. The family coverage is so expensive, and I just encourage to make sure we're always looking at the family coverage also. Employee only is what Affordable Care Act requires you to do, I, I get it, and those are important things, and it's a good barometer to help us judge, but I, I do, I've asked our colleagues, and I've asked Ms. Cale, let's start, let's also make sure we look at those that have our family coverage, because, yeah, that number may be smaller and dwindling, but it's also not because they want it to be dwindling. They're doing it out of necessity and require, they're priced out. Ms., Ms. Walton taught me a long time ago, Ms. Walton's a former teacher in our district, she said, teachers don't want to get rich, but they have to have a living wage.
Right.
And it's stuck with me for a long time, with Ms. Walton told me that, and it's true. And I think that's why this board has had such a fight in saying, this is a number-one priority. And when we talk to colleagues around the state, and listen, some of my colleagues up here, they work in amazing industries, they don't work in this industry, and so it's confusing for them, and I, I'm really happy to hear you're going around and talking to other boards, because I can't tell you how disappointing it is when you ask other board members around this state from some fairly mid-sized 30,000 life districts, I go, are you all in TRS active care? And they're like, what? We don't really know. And I'm like, how in the world do you not know and are not making this an issue of what's happening? And so I, I think, an education piece, so I really appreciate hearing that. I think we have to work on what's a family coverage, but from our side, really push the legislature, and I think we did that, hopefully, last session, to make some of these legislatures understand the differentiable funding from TRS and ERS. It's not a good comparison of funding, and it is showing the value of what teachers are in this state, and I think it's really disappointing when legislators are pushing that. And, and from your guys' side, it's a, like I said from the start, it's a really tough situation. You're said, here's your plan, you've got to manage the plan, and I think you're working hard to manage that plan, to track that. When you talk about 60% of total cost for employees, right, I think that's a comparison, and I'd like to see, you know, I'm asking you for this, but Ms. Cale, like, what's that comparison compared to those other major employers in this area? You know, are, are they...
The breakdown of sharing costs between the employer and the employee?
Yeah, at the very start, when you talk about 60%, I think it's...
Here...
I see so many of our clients...
Right.
They are able to increase their funding, and guess what? We're, we're tied on what we are, so it's that funding portion of where 60% of total cost is paid by employees.
So, so that pie, you could think of as a whole budget, or you could think of it as a per-employee distribution. And so roughly for, for the overall premium, districts are contributing over 55%... And so roughly for, for the overall premium, um, districts are contributing over 55%. But the employees are picking up, um, 44, a little over 44%. When you look at this on a, um, per employee per month, this is employee-only coverage. We, we tried to make an apples-to-apples comparison. It's not perfect because different industries, um, and the top up bar is different states. But, um, that, uh, that bar represents the total premium. So the divided up employee premium across the whole state. And in Active Care 1HD, um, the employees are picking up nearly $300 of that. So are you. You, you have a similar contribution. There's the $225, the state contribution of $75 plus the minimum requirement for districts, which is 150, plus the additional, you have some variation, you know, whether or not you participate, whether or not your, um, employee participates in a wellness program. But on average, I think you're around 301 for your contribution. So, um, compared to districts that go outside or that are operating outside of Active Care for a similar plan, they're paying on whole for that plan, um, nearly $100 more. Um, and they're, but their employers are picking up more as well.
And Ms. Daniels, what, and I appreciate that. What, what would that look like if we looked at family coverage?
It would be dramatic.
Dramatic. It's a huge.
And we are looking at, so, um, I mentioned this very briefly, but I'll, I'll go back to it because it is a good point. You know, so people who work with budget, you know, the balloon and, and you know, you've only got so much. You squeeze here, it goes there. So we can look at the relativities across the tiers. So we could apply more. So I think we have the same situation that you talked about with police and fire. So we know that spouses, if a spouse is employed and can get, um, coverage through their employer, it's probably a better deal for them. And that's where we want their spouse. But we are going to look, um, pretty hard at the tiers that, um, include children. So employee, child, employee, family, um, and see if we can adjust that. If we do though, that's going to increase the employee-only tier. But, um, I think because there are so many more employee-only, um, members, when we do that, it'll just be a little bump up on them. I don't think most districts will mind that. But it would be a significant impact for the, um, children and family tiers.
And, and I'm going to leave it to you and Mr. Kale and all the giant brains I know you have with your entire group in Austin. Because listen, people that are architects of healthcare plans, it's a science. There's a lot that goes into it and you, you're very talented to be able to do that. I'm glad I don't have to do that every day because it's a very difficult task to be able to get that. I, I think from making those type of changes is critical. And I think we've got to take those changes and look at those, um, for our employees. I think as a board, we've got to push more, you know, if we hadn't have pushed TASB to put it on legislative agendas, it wouldn't have been there. Why, we've got to push TASB to say, what's their more initiative of where they're going and what they're addressing on this? And make sure our TASB, um, delegates are really pushing towards this from that side. We as a board have to be supportive of TRS Active Care and support you guys in Austin of how we're trying to do this at the board meetings to make sure you're getting all the things you need from that side. And then from a legislative side, we have to push. We have, um, the gift, the power, whatever you want to call it, to be able to be very vocal and, and take our licks when we need it. You know, we, we can push on people and do that. And it's, it's, I think we have a step and we have to take those steps. Because fixing the affordability issue, um, for, and I, I appreciate you saying it for especially kids on the plan. Because I can tell you, I think we have a lot of kids who don't have insurance. And, and that's alarming to me, um, from that front. I know I've rambled and, and gone through a couple of things. I want to make sure we're being active. I want to make sure also from your side, you're helping people understand how to navigate healthcare. Because when I talk to teachers and all that, um, it's a confusing system, like we talked about before. So the more we can do to help employees understand, because you start talking, you know, you talk to HSA. It's nice to talk about the HSA, but less than 5% of the entire country actually uses their HSA the way it was intended to be used. I love the HSA. But I also have the gift of being able to fund it, cash flow my healthcare, and let it grow in a mutual fund and use that eventually as retirement from that. But across the people, people don't use it as a health savings account. They use it as a health spending account. And I, most people don't even stand, it's a huge tax advantage from where they can go from that. So putting all our eggs in this basket of HSA, which I'm glad to hear you say, that's not really the best value. I agree. Most of our teachers unfortunately aren't using that and they're on the place to be able to cash flow.
Right.
Healthcare.
That's right.
For a year. So as much as I will sing the praises of HSAs all over the board.
It's an important tool for, right.
It's probably not the best tool for this industry. You know, if I'm running a hospital system and I have a group of highly paid doctors, I'm going to really push that HSA and say, you guys should be doing an HSA or let's contribute or HRA to make it more, um, incentive to bring you in and lock your dollars in here from those, some of those type of things. So I, I've rambled. I've gone on a fair amount. I just say, anything you need from our staff, this board, um, I think I can quickly speak for all of us. We're in support. We, we know there's changes have to be made and we're glad you're making changes. And we really appreciate that. And we're going to be your biggest advocates, cheering, going for you, helping on what we can do. And if we can do anything, we offer anything we can do to help. Thank you.
Thank you. We really appreciate the collaboration. It's been tremendously helpful. It's, um, you know, it's hard to come from Austin and talk to local, um, healthcare providers. But when they see a significant employer in their area, then it makes a difference. So we appreciate that partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Dr. Reich?
Thank you, President Mays. And yeah, thank you, Mr. Hogg. This board is blessed to have you and, and your depth of knowledge in this industry being your industry greatly helps. I, Ms. Daniel, thank you so much for, for coming, uh, for the, the collaborative, uh, spirit and really the partnership with, with us, with Mr. Kale, uh, through, um, I probably are initially through our advocacy, uh, but the, the, there, where there's a will, there's a way. And I appreciate what you said about the, you know, maybe some of the, uh, responses back from some of the local health systems hasn't been quite where you'd like it to be. Uh, that is, that is a bit frustrating. There's, uh, there, there's money to be made for them. It, it just depends on, on maybe what, uh, I don't know if you have a, a, a range as far as a, a metric that you're providing them of what kind of a, you know, soft target maybe you're looking for. And I'm not necessarily looking for that. I, I was curious with the, uh, the February 20th, 21st, where the board selects the vendors. Is that locked in to where if you need a little bit more time, this can be kind of a carve-out where the board can convene?
So what we were looking at with, um, local hospital groups, um, were special concessions for the teacher retirement system. I think we can pursue that at any time with any partner. So what we were looking at with the, um, carriers that have been on our business is, um, what strength, what market strength they could bring to us. So we'll take that and build on that for any special deals that we can get in regions of the state that, where we can find partners. So for example, we might say on this new plan offering that we're talking about, if we could partner with one system in the area, we say, we're going to steer as much of our business to your, um, uh, set of facilities. If you can get behind, um, the commitment that we're looking for. And it's, um, both a primary care, quality-driven, um, uh, best discount arrangement.
That's great. I think, uh, the amount of time I, I've been on, uh, serving on this board, uh, just about almost 11 years now. And within the first few years, I had, uh, teachers approach me and, and stating that they're, uh, related to the healthcare contribution and, and the small, uh, raises that we're able to provide, they're in a net negative situation. And sadly, that has not gone away. If anything, it's increased, uh, especially over recent time. And as you said, it's not just our, our, our problem, our situation, healthcare in general is, is kind of a mess. But, uh, uh, it's, uh, it's very, it's very touching and, and really kind of heartbreaking when we have our educators that are pouring everything they have into the classrooms for our future. And they can't necessarily do anything for their own children. And so I, I, again, with Mr. Hogg, agree, uh, to focus on the, the family, uh, situation. Hopefully, like you said, there will be, uh, enough of, uh, the, the squeeze of the balloon, as you say, to, to where that, the, uh, individual will maybe go up negligible essentially. I, uh, I look forward to, to more information. Uh, I will put out there, reiterate what Mr. Hogg said, anything that we can do, uh, to, to be of service and add value. And Dr. Cavassos, thank you, Mr. Kale, Mrs. Powell, uh, for all of your work, uh, this past legislative session. And to, uh, the, the, uh, legislators that, that heard this as well. Whatever we can do, that's as elected officials, that's kind of our pull, is to work with our, our delegation, not just here, but statewide, uh, in different committees, et cetera. Anything that we can do, we, we are absolutely all in. Because, uh, if, uh, if I can go one year without having a teacher say that to me, I, it's never happened and it's in many multiples. So I really appreciate the, the spirit that you have, the attitude, uh, the approach and, and the hard work. It is, it is complex. I'm, I'm a healthcare guy, but I don't get into this area. It's just, it's a bigger brain than, than what I have too. So thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Ms. Fowler?
Yes, thank you, President Mays. Thank you for being here. Thank you for working with our district. We appreciate it. You made a statement, if I understood correctly, that the Dallas, Fort Worth, Arlington area is the third highest in the nation that we pay. Why is that?
It's interesting. Healthcare is, uh, is unlike any other industry in that when you think that you might have an oversaturation, um, of supply, that would bring the cost down, right? I was talking to Scott about this when I turned off of, uh, I guess it was off 30, 35 on to, I don't know what I turned on to, passed a freestanding emergency room. Do you know what freestanding emergency rooms are? They're an emergency room that's not attached to a hospital, but they bill us like it's a hospital. And they advertise a wait time. So I'll tell you a little bit about my background. I'm a trauma nurse by training. I used to work at one of the biggest trauma centers in the state, Ben Taub Hospital in Houston. I know what an emergency room looks like. And if you go to a place and you have a real emergency and they have to call 911, it's not an emergency room. But that's what those places are and they bill at ridiculous rates. And that's an egregious example of what happens. This area of the state is overrun with freestanding emergency rooms. And that's not the only, um, healthcare exploitation that happens in this area. The supply in this area drives the demand through advertising. I mean, look at the billboards. We met at Dallas ISD, um, for one of the recent meetings that we had. And I pulled out of their, um, administration building parking lot and like three billboards right on the freeway were, um, healthcare, uh, advertising. But what we can do is, through the work that we're doing, is curate a network of high-quality primary care doctors who will help guide our members to high-quality specialists, high-quality sites of care that are not just trying to generate revenue, but are trying to improve outcomes. And that's, that's the promise. It sounds, um, better and easier to accomplish than it actually is, but that's the path that we're on. And honestly, it saves money in the process. And if we can pull it off, it can have a catalytic effect in the industry. And that's what we hope for. At least for our members. I mean, it's the educators and I'm, I'm a product of Texas Public Education. My mother was a cafeteria worker. So. My aunt is a, uh, now retired educator, special ed. I mean, we all have educators in our family.
And it sounds like maybe we need to work with our city council and zoning to maybe not allow so many of these pop-up emergency room centers here in Arlington. Maybe that would help us.
Spread the word.
Yeah, I think that we need to do that.
If you really have an emergency room, go to the hospital.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Mays. And thanks again for being here. And I, I'm going to ask you a question that I would like an answer to, just so I can, I get the question a lot. And so I would like to hear from you because I have an expert right in front of me, um, that I can then share the answer with. And so as we go around and talk to teachers and they have a concern about the rising healthcare costs, there's this, they frequently hear that, well, we've got teachers, or teachers are on TRS. And then you've got the rest of the state employees and they're on ERS. And we hear that ERS is just so much better than TRS. And so, um, and so much cheaper and the options are better and so on and so forth. So one, I'd just like to ask you is how, how do you, how does TRS compare really to ERS? And then if ERS is in fact got lower premiums, better coverage, so on and so forth, what is the reason for that disparity?
The, there, uh, there is a difference in the plan offering that ERS offers than what TRS, um, offers. The, um, employees retirement system, the state employee health, um, system offers, it has a couple of different plan designs, but the one that helps select plan that most state employees are in is considerably richer than, um, most of the plans that TRS Active Care offers and retiree health plan for that matter. And the difference.
When you say they're considerably richer, what does that mean?
That the plans are more generous, that, um, the, like, there's not a deductible, for example. So you don't have to meet a deductible for, before your healthcare coverage kicks in. And the, um, like drug cost or a co-pay versus a co-insurance. The difference there is a fixed, um, cost per, say, prescription versus a percent of the cost at the co-insurance. And, um, the, um, state employees, uh, benefits are covered for the employee at 100%. And then for the dependent tiers, um, the state covers half of that premium. And, um, that's, I mean, that, that is the difference. The, um, the way, uh, the employees retirement system is funded is different than the way TRS is funded.
So how are they able to accomplish that for ERS?
It's, um, the legislature funds the program differently. So, um, back to this, oops. Back to this slide. So if you look at that, um, sort of pictograph on the left, um, the, uh, state contributes 75, I mean, they contribute. And I, I really don't understand school finance. I mean, I, I think healthcare. So, um, I can just talk about the way the health portion works. So the state gives, um, districts through their school funding formula, s- $75 per employee per month. And then that comes through the schools to TRS. Whereas for the employees retirement system, the, um, state appropriates money directly to the employees retirement system for its healthcare coverage.
Okay. And, um, that $75, do you know when that was set by chance?
Yeah, when Active Care was created.
When was that?
2000, it was created in 2001 and, um, that's right, isn't it? I think that's right. And, um, stood up in 2003.
Okay. Do you think it's, um, I mean, it, it sounds like y'all are working mightily to do the best that you can with the resources you have. I mean, but to some extent, is it a fair characterization to say that you're, and, and you and us are, are, uh, fighting an uphill battle kind of with one hand tied behind of our back because of the way that the state desperately funds these two retirement, or ERS, TRS-based healthcare programs?
I will say, and this is, uh, this is a good time to sort of make this point. And Mr. Hogg, uh, talked about advocacy. Um, and we get this question a fair amount. You know, why doesn't TRS just ask the legislature for more funding? We are statutorily prohibited from ad- We are statutorily prohibited from advocacy. I can explain this to the legislature. I can show them this. I cannot say TRS active care needs more revenue. I mean, that's sort of a decision for the policymakers, the budget writers, the folks we all elect, um, at the state level. So what, my, my challenge, you said it's a difficult one. I say it's a great one. I love it. Is to try to get more for these dollars. So how do we spend the money to the best of our ability, the best way possible, delivering the best services? It's, uh, I, I cannot, um, advocate for additional revenue.
So I mean, I think that's very helpful for me to know because we've been very involved in this, um, effort. And I've been on the board a little over two years and it's been a big part of what, what we've done in the, the time that I've been here. And I was a little surprised when we made legislative visits this last year when I felt like there were, we have been hearing this from teachers for a very long time and I felt like we ran into some policy makers who frankly were surprised that we, we had this story. And I, I'm not quite sure that how that, how that's possible. But I feel like, based on what you've described, the, I, I hope that y'all succeed in your efforts and that we get some realistic positive progress for our teachers. But, you know, as Mr. Hogg said, then on the family side and, and some of the areas that we really need, it sounds like, um, the real work to be done here is, is at the policymaking level to get some relief for our teachers because it's just not, it is not your fault because the healthcare is increasing across the board. But it, it is not sustainable for teachers to continue to have to encounter these types of increases. And it's, it does not sound like ultimately the efforts that we're making here is just sort of, you know, chipping at the, the edges of, of the problem. So this has been very helpful to, I think, highlight for all of us that, um, we need to take our message to, to Austin and, and say that these, these types of measures, while helpful, are ultimately not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Ms. Fowler?
I guess I've never understood. As a public school teacher, I was on TRS. But now that I teach at UTA and TCC before, we're on ERS. And with teachers in the room, I won't even tell you what a great deal I have on insurance because I, I won't. And so I don't understand why there's such a discrepancy. Why is public school TRS and higher education ERS?
It's, um, statutorily, does, I mean, it goes back to policymakers and their, their decisions on how to, um, distribute the workforce across the plans. So you're in the TRS pension program.
Right. But ERS insurance. And it, I, I, you know, as a, I'm, I'm grateful because it's a good deal for me, but my sister is a public school teacher. And when I hear the amounts that she pays and, and thinking that maybe she would make more money retiring than to stay being a teacher, and she's a fantastic teacher, that hurts me. You know, and I think about the students that would miss out on her teaching because she can't afford insurance. And that's just wrong. That's wrong. We've got to do something. It's just, it's not fair. Thank you.
Ms. Fowler, Mr. Will Banks?
First of all, I'd like to ask my colleague, Mr. Hogg, if he'd like to answer Ms. Fowler's question.
I would just say, we can advocate. Ms. Daniels is it, so we can answer a lot of Mr. Chapa's and a lot of Ms. Fowler's questions there. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Um, Ms. Daniels, one thing I'm struggling as a new trustee on this board is, you know, we have a limited set of budget to kind of help offset these increasing costs to our teachers. But help, help me understand, so I think the industry is predicting a six percent increase in healthcare costs this, this year. Does that sound about right?
It's, it's been consistently around seven over time.
Seven percent, okay.
And I, I showed you the slides that.
So when it, so if it goes up by seven percent this year, so will that translate to an increase? How do you guys mitigate that? Because at the end, we're, the cost is still going to go up, maybe not seven percent. But then we, as trustees, are, you know, we're limited in the amount of percentage that we can provide our teachers in the offset. So every year, as my colleague, Mr. Raish, said, the teachers are, are seeing a net overall erosion of their take home. So how, what do you, can you reiterate what you guys do to try to mitigate those increased in costs?
Sure. So, um, so in the words of our president, nobody knew healthcare was this complex. I wish I could say it's as easy as, um, the trend, uh, direct, directly or, um, closely aligns with the necessary premium increases. But that, that isn't always true. It depends on, uh, a number of factors. But, um, so I showed you this slide to show you. The top line shows you how much healthcare cost in Texas has grown, um, across similar employers. Assuming we, or let's say similar purchases, purchasers of healthcare who are bearing the risk themselves. So one thing I think is important to know, um, uh, Mr. Hogg, you know this, the, uh, in, in, um, insurance, the, um, cost of administration profits, commissions, everything that, um, is not healthcare can be, you know, twelve percent in or so. In TRS, our administrative cost is four percent. Ninety-six percent of the money that we have goes toward healthcare claims. That includes, um, the administration includes my salary, um, the, uh, money that we pay the carriers, the pharmacy benefit managers, consultants, any money that doesn't go into claims goes into that four percent. Ninety-six percent is spent on healthcare. So, um, so there we've, that's one way that we try to control costs. We squeeze down, um, all of the, um, non-healthcare-related revenue as much as possible. So that's as skinny as you're going to get there. Um, so the rest is healthcare. So you have to, so the money that we have to save is on healthcare cost itself. And how do we, um, the term that we use in healthcare is bend the cost curve. So we all know that the healthcare cost curve is like this. We're not going to bend it like that. That's not realistic. But how do we get it to flatten out, which is what we're doing at TRS? So the way we do that is contract negotiation. So that's what we're doing right now. The board will, uh, make the award in February. That will have an impact. We negotiate very aggressive rebates on drugs. We, um, manage, um, we look at our data on a regular basis. We, um, manage things that uptick in trend. When we see outliers, we dig in, figure out why that's happening, stop, um, certain behaviors. Things like the, um, freestanding emergency room trend. We, um, change benefits, launch an education initiative, and we do all of these things. Big things and small things. We look in the couch cushions. We don't let anything go. We pursue, um, we relentlessly pursue, um, sort of this promise of bending the cost curve. And so we can't make it go away completely, but, um, but we're mitigating costs like most other large-scale purchasers haven't, can't. I'm not sure, but, but, but we've, we've, we've been able to have an impact as this graph shows you.
But over time, your ability to bend that curve down, you're, you lose options. You're playing, you're going to play all your hand at some point.
I don't think anyone's ever going to win in healthcare. I mean, it's a constant game, you know? When we figure something out, out, this is, again, any, any savings that, savings that we generate, any cost avoidance that we, um, are able to achieve is a loss of revenue to somebody who will figure out another way. So there's always something to be gained, I think. I mean, I would love to solve the problem. But I think there'll always be something to work on.
So as a, just a final rapid question, so if costs go up by, say, seven or eight percent, the net effect in terms of increasing premium or increasing deductibles, that our teachers tend to have a, it's a typical.
So over the last, uh, I've been at TRS now four years. And since I've been there, our, uh, premium increases have been right around four or five percent on average. And we don't just, that, that's, we don't.
Sixty percent.
We don't, what's that? Yeah.
About sixty percent, I think.
But we don't blanketly apply it. We adjust different, we apply it differently across the tiers. We apply it differently across the plans.
Thanks. And again, I want to echo my colleagues' thoughts. Thank you for being here. I think this is great that we're seeing this kind of collaboration and working cooperatively together and, and trying to move the ball forward. And if it all ends on deck.
To move the needle. And, uh, thank you for your efforts. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Mays. Back to the TRS versus ERS, uh, issue. I- is it true that our elected officials with, um, you know, the reps and the senators and, you know, everyone else, the governor, um, are members of ERS?
Yes, ma'am.
So the people who are making the decisions, um, in Austin, in, in our government are helping themselves, basically. Is that, I mean, that, that's my opinion. I won't ask you for yours. So, um, I will echo, I appreciate your efforts because it's a huge uphill battle. And thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, Ms. Daniel, not, not, not any more questions. I know we've been pounding you a lot. If she figured out and solved the entire healthcare problem, she's just going to make a lot of money not working for TRS and let me, let us run along. Because if you can solve that whole issue. And Dr. Raish, you said, uh, you'd love it if in your years someone didn't complain about the insurance. No matter what we do, that's probably going to occur, no matter what, at any given time. And, and Mr. Will Banks, inflation goes up and all kinds of different things. Healthcare costs are always increasing. So that inflation rate, six percent, seven percent, is not terrible. I hate to say it across the board. So it's, it's, so they're working constantly, we know, to try and keep it. But healthcare is always changing constantly, so.
My goal is to always stay under, you know, for those of you who may have investments, work in the investment arena, you know, you're always trying to beat the market, come above the market with your investments. Our goal is to always be under the market trend. And we've so far been successful. I aim to, uh, continue that.
And, and I see what some of the largest employers in the state are doing. And it's very, they are trying anything, everything possible. A lot of times they're then contributing more money to Mr. Chapa. Mr. Chapa, Ms. Daniel can't advocate, but guess who can? We can say kind of whatever we want. Um, so, well, not. But, uh, it is. It's, you know, I look at the city of Fort Worth, who's had a negative, uh, healthcare spend the last couple of years. But I see some of the things that, uh, Brian's doing over there to push through and drive that, you know, started near-site clinics. He's driving all about where people are referring on the medical cost, um, on the pharmacy costs and specialists so that they're not driving up those costs. And he's, he's super aggressive to get that. But he's also got this size plan to manage when this plan is, is a whole whopper across the entire state. So, um, thank you. Thank you for coming up here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg.
Ms. Daniels, thank you very much for coming. Um, I will not repeat everything that my colleagues have said. But I will say that I know this is something that you've not normally done. So really do appreciate you taking the time to come and to be very honest about what you can do and share what, what you can do. I appreciate you. I appreciate you, Mr. Cale, for going out and being the face for us locally. So you continue to do what you do. I heard you say that you really enjoy a challenge, so we are presenting you with a huge challenge. But at the same token, um, we've heard the word partnership. And I know that this board and this district is very serious about doing what we can do. Um, and if that means legislate, that means legislate. We will continue to advocate as well. But, um, I'm just very excited that we're doing something because it doesn't do any good to say, oh, how horrible that is. I'm sorry you feel this way. We have to continue to hear you. Well, we're going to take everything that you've said and take that energy and try our best to help move the needle. And we appreciate you helping to do that as well.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here and thank you for your partnership.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is our open forum for non-agenda items. This second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. I have one card for my audience. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. I have one card for Mr. Daniel Bennett from White Settlement, and your subject is Directors with TAD, the Tarrant Appraisal District.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, President Mays, Superintendent Kavassos, and Board. There's a meeting on the twenty-third, uh, put on by the Directors of this month. It's a open workshop. So, uh, to expand upon what you just mentioned to the lady who's a trauma nurse who's up here for TRS, interactiveness through all facets of government that affects this body is necessary, not just healthcare. It's also the appraisal district. So I challenge each and every one of you to be there on the twenty-third at ten a.m. to noon. I'm here not to talk about a good subject. It's a subject I want to talk about are the makeup of the directors, our tax assessor-collector, and what happened this past Friday. But I have to take you back first to July eleventh, twenty eighteen. There was incident TAD where there was a second-degree felony being committed by a thirty-year-plus appraiser. His name was Michael Savatson. He was adjudicated on September fourth. His crime was illegal videoing under a table. There was an actual video taken of this man in, in, in the act, taken to our chief appraiser. And what the chief appraiser did, instead of stopping the hearing, he waited until the hearing was over to address the issue. Being interactive in all facets of government is important, and creating safe environments is even more important. I'm not sure what the Board of Directors knew. Mr. Savatson was allowed to resign, retire, and off into the sunset he went on that following Friday. The eleventh was a Wednesday. The police were not called. There's a standing sheriff's deputy at TAD on all, for all occasions, for all hours. The only reason the police were called is because the injured party made a report the following week. So I didn't know what the directors knew. That year, twenty eighteen, they evaluated the chief appraiser, gave him a three percent raise. I was very upset. And so I'm still upset. So on August twenty-third, as I'm addressing you this evening, I addressed that. I actually gave them documentation, uh, an audio disc, actually, of a voice of our chief appraiser sticking his head inside the door, asking if the meeting was over, if, if the perpetrator was through with the board. And, um, he allowed the meeting to come to fruition. So anyhow, uh, I was cut off during the, uh, my dissertation to the board on that day by the, uh, lady named Catherine Alder. But what was important to me was who I addressed that day. I addressed Mike Lehman, who's no longer on the board. I addressed Joe Pothoff, who's no longer on the board. I addressed Mark Wood, who was no longer on that board. And I addressed Mike O'Donnell, who is still on the board today. Well, this past December, the chief appraiser got another three percent raise and off we go. Now, the election concluded on December sixteenth. So we have three new board members, Catherine Wyman, Gary Lasada, Rich Diott, and two returning senior board members, Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Mollinow. This past Friday, January tenth, our tax assessor-collector made a motion without discussion to nominate Mr. O'Donnell for chairperson. If I hadn't stood up that day and. If I hadn't stood up that day and said, the mayors are here to support these other candidates and need heard, it would have gone without notice. Anyway, today, Mike O'Donnell is the chairperson. The fact that our tax assessor collector, who's not a voting member of the board, actually made that motion, makes me feel like I like to recall her politically, on a recall ballot. She was sitting there on August twenty-third, she heard what I had to say, she came over and addressed me, and said the only thing I said incorrectly was I mentioned the injured party's name, which victimized her again, and I do agree with her. Mr. Savatson admitted he did it, it's in the arrest affidavit, he admitted it to the judge, there was no doubt that he did what he did. That day on the twenty-third, after they came out of executive session, Joe Potoff says, well, in America, we're considered innocent until we're proven guilty, and the man confessed, and yet, on December thirteenth, I think, of this year, the chief appraiser got a three percent pay increase, and I just think y'all ought to know, now you've probably heard this from Mike O'Donnell already, but I hope you heard it the same way I just told it, because his job is to inform you, it's, and to me, it's serious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Okay, next on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Mays, and, uh, brief report here, I do want to thank our community and all our different partners for all their work and all their donations, uh, throughout the last, uh, season of our holiday, right before break, uh, we, we had many, many, uh, donations and support of our schools and specifically our students, so thank you one more time to our outstanding community in Arlington. Uh, we're obviously excited to start the new semester here, and as you heard earlier, this is just a reminder, we have the, uh, MLK weekend this weekend, with many different activities to, uh, support not only our students, but our MLK, uh, weekend as well, so I encourage everyone to take full advantage of that, and also finally, our, uh, Explorer AISD continues with high school specialized program applications that are ongoing and due now in January thirtieth, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Do we have any school board members that have a report? Ms. Fowler?
Well, I just wanted to thank the AISD Agriculture Department, um, they gave us poinsettias back in December, and mine is still absolutely beautiful, so I want to thank them for that.
I told you, mine's still alive, too. Mr. Will Banks? Push your button, push your button one more time, please. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Ms. Mays, um, I want to recap, um, the thing that I was blown away as a first-time trustee this holiday season, we had a number of fine arts groups, um, perform with madrigals, with Martin's Showcase, with their show choir, but I have to say the one thing that I was blown away with, Mr. Hogg and I had the privilege of going to Sam Houston High School, and they presented, um, a commissioned piece by the Sixth Floor Museum in Dallas, um, where their percussion group performed live along with the movie, Three Hours in Dallas, about the JFK assassination, assassination, and I was totally blown away, the, um, it's so inspiring to see that, the fact that we're now providing professional-grade, um, instruments, and we have such talented, um, teachers, uh, that are doing great things with students, and students who have never had that kind of opportunity, see them to perform at that level in something so extraordinary and so moving, um, I just can't put into words how amazed I was by the whole experience, it was truly moving, so kudos to Sam Houston, too, um, the name escapes me, Jesus Martinez, the percussion, percussion director, and all the stuff that they're doing there, but again, all over this district, it's the stuff that we have done as a board over the years to, to continue to invest in fine arts is paying off in spades, and it's really changing students' lives for, in so many countless ways. So, um, thank you to my colleagues in the past, and thank you to all our dedicated, uh, fine arts, uh, professionals that are really inspiring our students and doing great things.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Push, uh-huh, push your number up. There you go, Ms. Walton.
Uh, in this month's Arlington Today magazine, there is a story, uh, about, uh, the, uh, the performance that you just described, so you'll want to read that.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, President Mays, and, and, Mr. Will Banks, thanks for bringing that up with Sam, that was one of the, we go to a lot of things, that was one of the most moving events on there, um, and Ms. Walton, I'm glad you brought that up on Arlington Today, and I hope we would get them scheduled when our new Fine Arts Center opens to be one of the events we put on, because it would be amazing to have it in that, uh, performance hall when that's completed on time, correct, Mr. Horn? Um, and, and Ms. Fowler, as you talk about the Ag students, uh, the great thing, they are doing amazing things, and as they have now, uh, tripled, almost quadrupled in size from that program, just from building that Ag barn to what it is now, what that also means is they have almost about tripled the animals that will be up for sale in this year's Tarrant County Junior Livestock Show Auctions, so, uh, there is a group of other young men like myself, who, years passed, we've bought a lot of the animals, well, we don't have that much money, so we will be, uh, we, we will be holding an event to raise some funds for, uh, for folks to buy all that, so we'll, we'll let y'all all know, so get your checkbooks ready, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Uh, no, I don't believe we do.
Thank you, Ms. Walton.
It is now nine forty-nine, and I have my glasses on even, nine forty-nine P.M., and this meeting is adjourned.